Good gracious, we, Father, we thank you for this beautiful Lord's day, and we just thank you for all the blessings, Lord, that you bestowed upon us. And we ask you now, good with us during this meeting tonight, leave God direct us in that everything we do, and please, we believe in your light. We ask all of this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ.
To the light of the United States of America, into the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, the liberty and justice of our fathers.
Thank you, y'all, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this afternoon. We are going to be handcuffed a little bit tonight. What I mean by that is, we do not have our attorney, he had to go to have surgery that day. So it was done at an emergency situation, I don't know the details about it, I just remember that he's done, he's just coming out. And so, we will not be able to handle anything that would be controversial, or where we would need his assistance. We do not have anything on this agenda right now, but I see that would be, so we will just move forward with the meeting. Sherry should be here soon, Franklin, I, does anybody even know about her, I have been out of touch with her.
All I know is that to the hospital.
I know he's been in the hospital.
Thank you, went back home, but I don't know if she's back.
So hopefully she'll be here in a few minutes, and we'll get up there, okay? So we'll start off tonight with the low call, so we have Curtis in the back, we also have our prior chief, Jeff has had a death in his favor, he's not gonna be here tonight. So, like I say, we're having one of those meetings tonight, so. Curtis is here, Wendy is here, Ms. Sue is here, Tyler's here, I'm here, Mr. Jin is here, as of right now, hopefully with Sherry will be here in just a few minutes. With that being done, at this point, obtain approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
We have approval of the minute, closing in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote, same motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes for the November sixth, twenty twenty-four town council.
I make the motion to approve the minutes for the November sixth, twenty twenty-four town council.
Second.
Again, we have a motion and a second, all those in the papers, signify by saying aye. Vote, same motion carries. Public participation, we ask that you complete a speaking request form and submit it to the deputy clerk, the committee approach the podium. Speak clearly and state your full name and address for the record, comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Tonight, we have Mr. Jerry Mungu.
He was outside.
Elijah, you were in charge of Jerry.
Yeah.
All right, I tell you what, Elijah, you wanted to talk, you could have first, Jerry be here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait, see him, Jerry's.
I said, I don't see him, Jerry's.
All right, well, he might want to run back.
He might be on the way in, I don't know.
Okay, how do you that feel?
My name, everybody know me, Elijah Williams. I, um, as you know, I'm just asking you about what I have to do for me. And you don't have to call, but I don't know, that's why I'm listening. But what I'm here about tonight is, what I've been talking about is, what are we gonna do for the town and the council, because we're not wrong. Like I said before, she won this one, Wilson was won, and we have a GM, and what I was told by you, Mr. Mayor, that's why we have a GM, can't have one go. So maybe the GM will tell me tonight, what's new.
What's new regarding RUTS?
RUTS.
Well, that's the longest thing.
I'm talking about something that will benefit RUTS.
Everything we do.
RUST or any.
Everything we do benefits RUST, I mean, you know, we've got on the agenda today, the first reading of ordinance to abandon town further, that we've been working on for several years. That's something that hopefully will benefit the town. We're working on revamping our land development regulations, we're working with a consultant to do that, that would hopefully benefit the town. And I don't know what you mean exactly, when you say benefit the town, you talking about businesses, or you talking about specifically businesses? So in the news letter that I'm writing right now, we have the redo businesses that are in town, we have the bank that just opened up next door, the bank.
What's the name of that?
Southern First Credit Bank?
First Southern Bank, or First Bank?
How do you get in the, uh, back, like, we live here. You're very correct, I hear that, you're, you got, yeah.
So that's one new business that started, Julie's converted her pub to an ice cream shop, they just opened a week or two ago, so that's a new business. And then Mitchum Cleaning Services just started, and that's another new business that's in the mix, so we actually have three brand new businesses that we have.
That's another business, the car house. Is it Maves?
Yes, Maves.
All right, I hear that.
And, like I say, there's a lot of things going on, and if, when and if we can get some, you know, hopefully some things going on, all the things we need to do is just continue and move forward, okay?
I think you want to add a potential justice judge.
You got it, you got it, let's be.
Right, your own business, the laundromat, has it been rented yet? If you can give me the information, I got somebody that's very interested in, open at twenty-four hours a day.
I had several people interested in it, but the problem was, is that when, when I called the company that owns it, they were having a hard time getting back with anyone. And then when I called, anytime I called after that, they wouldn't answer. So I don't know what that issue, I can give you the contact information that I have, but be prepared to get a voicemail. But I, I took pictures of every residence that, I'm sorry, every business that was open, that was available for sale, and I have posted it all over the state of Florida. Trying to get somebody an A and A, and most definitely the laundromat, because we desperately need a laundromat. And everybody that was interested in the laundromat had a hard time getting up with people that owned it. And I haven't seen anybody else get A and A or any other business that was for sale.
So no one wants to buy A and A, you're saying?
No, that's not what she's saying, it's that the interest is there, but the communication between the people selling and the people wanting to buy is not where it should be. So she's working and trying to connect the two, and she's not having much success of it.
But with the laundromat, I'm not having success with, with the people that own it wanting to get the information out to the people that want to rent it. That, I had more people interested in the laundromat than any other business I posted.
And for general information, the lot that's been cleared out here is, what's the name of that, with the trailer fit?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I can't remember, but it's from Miami, it's close to Miami.
I don't know, it's gonna be a familiar song.
That's going to be a, you know, like, you have a set, a trailer, you know, like a full trailer that you put behind your vehicle, or something like that, or some kind of, they won't just put it at a sale place right there for them, so. That, that, that's in the works, yeah, we'll come back. Okay, anybody else on that, yes, ma'am?
No, it's, it's about business, but you all were talking about the bank up here, and, so there's business in that?
Ice cream shop?
Well, see, we, you people don't know nothing about, as you say, you people, we don't know nothing, I don't know whether y'all see how to lose land or what, but.
Well, the, you know, all these things are private owned situations, I mean, it's their stuff to do. And if they want to advertise, of course, we, y'all, listen, no, we have to be real picky about what we can do about stuff that the newspapers tell us. What we used to do in the newspaper, it used to cost five or ten dollars a day, perhaps just, we all know this, an obituary, the newspaper, they cost two or three hundred dollars for a little obituary now, so it's crazy. And then the, the, the real thing is, nobody gets a newspaper anymore. Everybody does social media in some way, form, or fashion, but yeah, we can do that on our webpage, we can put anybody if we do that.
The newsletter hasn't been out yet, obviously. They'll be on the new newsletter.
Every time somebody does come in like that, we do put them on. Jerry, you were telling my friend?
Sorry, 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 we're getting laid, y'all, but I was, you want to see me sit, sit. But I'm here on behalf of the citizens, I guess, still a few of us here, and we're just concerned citizens about what's going on in our town. To my knowledge, I guess, they talked about some stuff, like, what I had, I think when I came in, I heard something about, are the rates going up on water and garbage?
Yes.
Yes.
January first. We do a CPI rate increase, so probably, I mean, when we looked at when they passed the resolution, it was three point three percent. So it's a keep up with inflation basis.
Okay, so we're concerned, I think I heard something about businesses, so we're concerned that any new businesses on the rise, that, 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 that.
Well, again, we're, we're, we're open arms to anybody, that, you know, if, if, you know, we're trying to accommodate anybody, but as much as we can. Constantly, you know, there's some of the things that we need to add here in place, and we've accommodated that, some of that, sewer, water, and all that, you know? And we're working on that diligently, you know, putting it in places, as the other things, and I spend some of the fall back that we've had over the years, but a lot of that stuff is in place now, so it doesn't matter, if you build it, they'll come. So now we got, we got, we got it to that situation now, hopefully.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is there, like, I don't know, publics, no vindicacy, no?
That's all economics.
But I was wondering if anything, maybe McDonald's or something like that.
Jerry, I have, I have personally talked to.
McDonald's?
Stoney, you know, Stoney has franchises with Dairy Queen, Wendy's, Chicken Places, all of these other stuff, and I've asked him personally about it, you know, what, what's, what do we need to do? And it's all based on economics and numbers, that's what it's all about. There's a, the place just opened up in Archer, they didn't have, you know, I just, I just. Getting some great reviews, I, you know, I wish we had something like that open up here, that would be nice to be, something. It takes an individual with a, with a mindset, you know, to do that, and that's what it's all about. It's that person, defining that person that wants to come to you, so, but that's. There you go, again, what, after you, what, what kind of incentive can you give them?
I don't know, I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, I don't know.
I mean, you can, you can, you can't give a break for nothing that we don't have, and we're limited to the financial part of it. All we can do is sit here and say, hey, hopefully we can get people to, you know, to buy from you, whatever it is, because that's, basically, that's what it boils down to. The reason why the laundromat cannot stay in business is because, one thing, they don't stay open enough, and that's my personal opinion, but, and, and if you not open the business, you sure can't sell it, so. I, I was hoping that when, when Stoney opened his place up down the other corner, that, that right there, because usually, if you see somebody put something like that here, then other people will fall for it.
Our biggest hurdle is the store on businesses, number one. Number two, now, with the laundromat, I think that we all could have a conversation about once the business owner reaches a certain amount of water, that they get charged a lesser amount. But until somebody, you know, comes and shows interest in it, and then talks with the people that own it, we can't offer them that. You know, they didn't have to come to us, and I'm quite sure that as much as our town needs a laundromat, that's something that we all could come together and figure out. I reached out to Browns about A and A, they didn't even, they didn't even say nothing about. I mean. And then I, I, I actually.
I had somebody on one side, they said, not that right.
I shared it on, um. Nobody was interested.
So basically, we need sewer.
We do need sewer for businesses, we, we definitely need sewer for businesses, and that's what, that's what Sue has been trying to work on, using stock. Like, that is, that is the number one priority as far as business-wise, so, like, and we have to get it.
You know, we have the grant there for spanning the residential, which is still in the last phase of them deciding who, who gets it or not, which is almost nineteen million dollars.
We have a total of over thirty million dollars in grant applications right now with FDE, that we will go on December first.
But also, there's money to be made here, that's the thing, we got a lot of money to be made here, we want something to act, like, we want something to eat.
Me and my friend applied for the Chick-fil-A thing, so, yeah, it's like ten thousand dollars or whatever, and they said, no, they didn't take your location, they said, you can do it in Chick-fil-A.
So we're like, huh?
Yeah, it's a density of people.
Once Chick-fil-A got McDonald's, it exploded.
I don't know.
Well, and we hear different things, because at first, it was like, it had to be near this highway, or by this highway, or whatever, but then, before that, then when we asked, then they put one in Trenton, and it was like, well, that ain't, I mean, that's the same thing. So it just depends on, at what time you reach out, who you get to, and what their answer is. But part of the problem was hurting, is like, you can't say you want to sell a building, building, and offer it for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like, who, who buying there? So you'd rather see it closed, than let somebody new come in and take it at an affordable rate, and so, that's, that, that hurts all of us, because now that building is sitting there closed, and people who want to buy it, to start something can, and they're not, he's not the only person that asked about it. So at first, because remember, at first, it was just gonna be remodeling, and then the closed side of here, and then it's kind of like, well, tell us what you're offering, and then we'll let you know that we're not gonna take it, basically.
All right, well, it sounds, you know, the main thing is getting some sewer.
But if y'all, if, if anybody that you know, talks to any business owners that shows interest, please send them our way. If it's somebody that you know that we don't know, and you know something we don't know, please send them our, our way.
Okay, question though, if we find somebody, and you still don't have the sewer.
We have, we have sewer.
I mean, I mean, for businesses.
We have, we have sewer, we have, we got it for the.
So that's not a problem, that's not a problem.
It stops, it stops at the dog, right before the Dog General.
But just, just to give you an example, because a lot of people like to understand the feasibility on some of this stuff, for us to run a water line, because we had a water problem out at the new fire station, okay, we couldn't want keeping up water, enough volume going out there, because the line was too small. So we come up, we had two plans that we could look for, one was to put a well in out there, or we could put a bigger pipe line out there. What was it again, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to put a water line from the crossroads out to there, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We could drill a well for a hundred fifteen billion, or something like that, so it's more feasible for us to do that, and that is being, taking care of the taxpayer's money in a better way. The problem with that well is, now you can't use it for drinking purposes, because it's got a lot of iron in it, and we knew that when we went in it. If it would have, if we could have used it for drinking purposes, that'd been, that'd been a win-win situation, so we've been put tapped into our existing situation. But that's the things that were, and the cost of putting some of this infrastructure, I mean, is just a lot of cycle up in there.
Just a couple of things, uh, we looking to expand the iron by Dollar General, because my friend Terry, he's, he's there in city, but he's a little bit of water, we would like to help, see the water.
Can there be handouts?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, uh.
That is openly on the table right there, okay, we are looking at annexation everywhere, okay? I talked with a gentleman the other day for Estes, right outside of town, uh, for our lot, he's got this solar park that's going in, I know everybody's seen it, what is that out there?
That's what that is, the, 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 the.
Thousand acre of solar, okay, coming to get the orange, coming to stay afar. I told the devil about, because they've been buying water from us, okay, well, they went and put their own well in, of course, that's what they have to do, you know, to make it work. And I said, well, listen, we're looking at annexation, he said, yeah, we would, we would be interested in that, because the service that comes in, they want to be a part of the community, that's what we're doing.
I think you got some other that want to be part, so like you say, you got office something.
Yeah, well, you got, you know, then you got to get them into the system, and annex them, and then we can do.
This is another part, um, Ms. Sue has targeted, um, the, the little neighborhood past Dollar General on the left-hand side, that is where she is currently trying to get annexed in right now.
The subdivision right out past there, the one that they, they just started working on, they're wanting to get annexed. There, there's a whole lot of things that, you know, that they're getting, it takes money to do.
Well, we've kind of been absent, so we need means that it's starting coming, listening, try to stay informed.
We can help you in any way I can.
No, I just wondered, uh, what about pursuing grants for what we need for?
Yeah, we got over, yeah, quite a few grant applications already out, and the first one, we'll hear from December the first, we have some stuff already in the works.
This, this is general information also, we have hired a grant, you can't operate this law of aid from a municipal, without a grant, right? We have hired a young lady, Sherri is from Lake City, she is working with us, and she is working diligently on this stuff, uh, and. One of these days, we'll get her here to a meeting, so I can ask you. But, yeah, she is, she came, but she is, like I said, she's a micro jack, so she works on this stuff, uh, she's not only works for us, she works for several other Lake City and different ones. And she works on a contingency situation, in other words, if she produces something, she getting paid for it. So in this case right here, she's diligently out there working, looking for all kinds of, she did some stuff for Jeff and them on the fire department. She's also be working on the grants for the sewer and all of that. All right, do we have anybody else that wanted to speak about anything on that? Anybody else?
My, uh, my, my, my road, my road's supposed to be a dead end, and we got a, we got a, we got a, 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 a fire alarm there.
So is that why somebody is asking about?
On Boundary Street. It's boundary.
Yeah, is that, is that why somebody is asking about, um, clothes off Hurst Street?
Mike and I, we were doing the, um, damage assessments from the parking, he saw that that was blocked, and he said, it's against the law.
So is, but that's her property, right? Because what's blocked off was Ms. Brown's property.
But it's, it goes through, I think, doesn't it?
It just blocked off, so you can't go in, on that property.
I have to talk to Mike again, but he said.
I didn't see, I didn't, I didn't get into it on email, but I don't understand why they can't have that, because it's their property.
Normally, the only time legally you can't block somebody is if there's a house behind that road, if there was a house with no other access. So let's say you owned a house right here, and then I got a house behind you, you can't block the drive.
I, I think we've done the assumption that that wire goes all the way through, but it doesn't, it just blocks off the entrance to that property, it doesn't go any farther than that, and nobody is behind it. There's no road, that's, that was her yard.
And, and, can they block off, uh, Boundary here?
See, I was, I was told, I, I asked about that before, when that road first turned into a, a speedway, if we could, there was something that we could put down there, or something to stop people going through there, and I was told, because it's a liability, if you put something in the road to stop it. People, like, does, there's a big sign that says dead end, like, you're not supposed to be going through.
But, but the person that owns the property could, right? They could fence that part off.
These are all my issues, I will definitely check it.
Well, we hear put speed bumps around that?
Not, not speed bumps.
Can I say something, uh, speed bumps don't work, because on Pine Street, it's, it's, it's seventy-five up there too, they run up to the speed bump and stop, and, so we have a lot of traffic and a lot of speed going through there.
Yes, and on Hurst, they come through Hurst and get a weird road speed bump on the other road.
That road, uh, it, what, 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 you put them in, it belongs to Mary Jo, and belongs to, uh, that park over, oh, boy. And it, it belongs to nobody else on his side there, but you, but, but it can be blocked off there.
All right, well, we will, we will find out your clarification.
You talking about the end of Boundary Street? Yeah, it used to be blocked off, and now we blocked it off once before, because they were dumping back there.
But I think the problem now, I can.
Everybody was taking their garbage and dumping it, and we had blocked that off. It goes all the way.
The road goes all the way through to Wilson Avenue, and that's, that's why it's a lot of traffic, it travels down Boundary, going to Wilson, then comes from Wilson through Boundary.
Is that, is that a legal easement?
Well, I don't know if that's the county ours, but on Wilson, it does have a sign that say Boundary.
Oh, okay, okay.
You don't have anything else, I'm gonna move on, all right? Uh, informational items, the Office of Special Water and Special Water Department Board of Meeting is Wednesday, November the twentieth, right here, at one P M, you are all welcome to come. Next up is the Florida Rural Economic Development Summit, is the twentieth, is Wednesday, November the twentieth, and Friday, November the twenty-second.
It's in the panel, so I will be, I'll be office thirteen, right at that.
All right, Red of the Mighty Food Bank Mobile Drive will be at Friday, the twenty-second, nine-thirty, at James Cobb Park, same thing, Joey, get your hair in line.
Yeah, I do.
Town Hall will be closed Thursday, November the twenty-eighth, and Friday, November the twenty-ninth, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Our next town council meeting is Monday, December the second, six P M here. The Dr. Martin Luther King Parade is Monday, January the twentieth, at twelve P M.
And that's at Wilson, right?
Right, so I know, there's a thing in your pack, and I don't know if you guys want to be in it, just waiting it. Some to you guys, Wendy and I have to work, because it is beginning to qualify for your school options, so we'll be here.
Yes.
Y'all have a choice.
That's the first day of qualifying?
That's correct.
I want to be on the council list, first day of qualifying, January.
Ms. B, Ms. B, do they, do they like throw candy beer, or no?
No, no, they can't throw candy. But they meet at Luther King's Park, and then they have, you know, like, hot dogs and hamburgers and candy and everything, I walked it last year, but I'll be around soon.
Who puts that, who, um, so name I?
Uh, the boy Luther King.
Uh, the Martin Luther King, uh, Williston group.
So we don't participate when we say that?
We used to when our little council, we, the fire truck used to go there and they would, uh, participate, but they haven't in the past company.
Yeah, I would, I would go and represent the town of Williston.
All right. All right, you got that taken care of, right? And this next thing is, I'll let Sue take care of that and I'll handle the rest of it.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this into the record. It came from Chuck Cummings, Representative Chuck Cummings. This is a week or so ago. Oh, he's, I'm sorry, because he's still, sorry. All right, it says, whereas on the third of March in the year of our born eighteen forty-five, Florida was designated as the twenty-seventh state in our great nation. Whereas over that time, ninety-one sessions of the Florida House of Representatives have been gavelled in to do the business of the people of our great state. Whereas every two years, Florida's voters from every station in life have cast a ballot to express their desire as to who they feel is best to represent their communities in Tallahassee. And whereas a few select leaders have made those sacrifices to invest their time, treasure, and talents to advise council and support the campaigns of the candidates of their choice, both before Election Day and beyond. Whereas in the area of our state, which includes Alachua, Dixie, Gilchrist, and Levee Counties, is rich with attributes that enhance the benefit of progress and opportunities for all four years and their families. Whereas it is only through the efforts of advocacy of those same leaders who give voice to the needs of their neighbors by equipping their representatives of the capital with knowledge, expertise, and insight to pass measures to grow and protect the lives, livelihoods, and opportunities for citizens. Whereas eight years ago, a campaign was successfully run, electing a first-term legislator who was and still is public with all those whose deeds, words, and guidance helped to shape him as lawmaker and to maximize his effectiveness during his term of office. And whereas while the recipient of this proclamation is a leader in their own right, there is no question that they have been a constant hero and their fingerprints are on any positive impact that has been made by Charles Chuck Cummings during his tenure in the Florida House of Representatives. Be it further resolved on behalf of the many citizens and families in our house district, it is good and proper to leave to memory and give great pause and recognize the great example and role well established through the many good works of Mayor Robert Hartman and explain our gratitude for your continued dedication to the service of state and nation. From Charles Chuck Cummings.
Appreciate you. Whatever it is.
You did not just say that.
That's what it is. So we got, he know where you are.
Okay. Send money. All right, Sue, I will turn the rest of this over to you for the reading of our board.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I might be out of, uh, phone call, but, um, I'm speaking on behalf of my name. Uh, is there any recognition that you can give Mrs. Bill Patterson Jr., who has turned one hundred and three years old? The town can give him any kind of recognition, uh, flag or whatever?
Yeah, you did one for his hundredth birthday, I think, right?
Yeah, we did it.
I thought you did.
Yeah, we did.
When's his birthday?
I can't, I have some hearing issues.
When's his birthday?
His birthday was July, uh, eighteen, July eighteen, he was hundred and three.
Want me to put him in the next newsletter?
And he's still voting, he came in personally.
Yes. So he'll be in the next newsletter and not go out to everybody. He'll, he'll be in the next newsletter with his picture and something little written about him being a hundred and three.
What about the last? Well, I wanna know if there's something, because my sister and the family would need to know to get him ready for any type of presentation or after, or whatever you are going to start to do to recognize him, that's up to you. But I would just, I feel like the town of Brunson, he may not be the oldest person in, in Brunson, may not know, but. I, I don't know anybody that's a hundred and three growing on a hundred and four.
Mr. W, please.
Do it on the second meeting of the summer.
Could we maybe one day, uh, take just say, December the first or something, name it, to give Patterson day in Brunson or something, you know, whatever day y'all decide. And then, you know, like have a flag for him.
Sure.
And then, every year, that would be the year Patterson made. He may not be here. I do the presentation for that, for me, that day, today.
We can do the, we'll do the presentation in second meeting, December, that will have time to get the flag.
All right, put it in form, motion to let this official.
I make a motion that we, uh, acknowledge Mr. Give Patterson on December the sixteenth, um, at our next meeting for being, uh, let's say, a hundred and three. Um, and just for being an overall big decision.
All right, we have a motion without objection, but here's.
Thank you so much for coming and asking.
Yes, bringing that to our attention.
All right, well, I just need to know, so I do let my sister, who is taking care of him right now, give her ample time to get that, you know.
December the sixteen. December the sixteen.
December the fifteen?
Sixteen. Sixteen at six P M.
One and six.
Thank you so much. All right, Sue.
All right, so first on my agenda is ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight, making the town charter. I've been reading the title of the record. In ordinance of the town council, the town of Bronson, Florida submitting to the electors a proposed revised and updated new charter, making changes designed to promote, sorry, to remove antiquated references and follow existing statutes and standards, in particular lies matters of council procedure. Providing for direction to the deputy clerk, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing effective date for the ordinance and for the approved amendment. Okay, so in your packet, and I know this started two years ago, so I'm trying to bring everybody back. You have three versions of the charter. The first one is, um, the current charter, it starts with section one, abolishment of present government, it is fifteen pages. And it is currently on our website, if you go under the town manager tab on the town of Bronson website, you have this version and then the new version. So that current version, um, is first up in your bag. The second in your packet is the proposed new version of the charter, which has been reduced from fifteen pages down to ten. And at the top it says proposed charter revision of and for the town of Bronson and the state of Florida and the United States of America. And it's got a bunch of yellow on it that says new, modified, starts out looking like this. And then the third thing that's in your packet is a strikeout version, the Lexus form, when, uh, when John Forrest, when he was on interim with us. So it has all of the kind of, all of you adding and subtracting and everything that's being done and cross out and. In summary, because there's a lot of changes, obviously, we had a town charter review committee that worked on all these changes. We met for the better part of the whole year in twenty twenty-two, so I'm gonna give you kind of my footnote version of it. Um, the major changes include the election interim of the mayor. So instead of the mayor being elected from the council, he would now be elected by the electorate. So that's probably the biggest change in this whole charter. The elimination of seat numbers in favor of at-large seats. So you guys may have followed that in, uh, Alachua County, we actually just had that happen, where instead of picking, you wanna run for, you know, whether you are a seat one or five, or anything. Instead of picking a seat, you would just put your name in to run for town council and then the people who get the top three votes, if there's, you know, three, um, seats up, would be. How would that work?
Yeah, who's gonna vote for them? They have to be up on the council.
Well, let's use the next, you know, some elections like that. So Councilor Worthy's, Mayor Hartman, and Vice Mayor Schuler are all up for reelection. And so assuming that they ran and let's say three people in the audience ran at the same time, we have six people running for three seats. Whoever gets the top three votes would get the seats. So people can't say, I wanna run against Councilor Worthy. They would just be putting their name and that's how they would get the top three votes.
So then, how do you pick mayor out of that, like how?
You don't.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, so you have somebody who run for mayor, which.
You have to run for mayor specifically.
You guys would still select vice mayor as it is in the current charter, but the electoral chart would vote mayor.
So a person would have to say whether they're running for a regular council seat or whether they're running for mayor?
They would pick what they're like. Yeah, keeping in mind again, we still have the whole resign to run.
We gotta look into it a part and add another council seat.
Right, so we may decide to add a council seat and, and still have five voting members and a mayor, instead of having a mayor and four council seats.
Cause they're gonna make the numbers up.
Yeah, you gotta, you're gonna have to have five voting members, and if it's gonna be a strong mayor, it's gotta be his own separate thing, so you're gonna have, add another council seat.
Is it gonna be a strong mayor? That's a term. That's what I'm asking, are you planning a strong mayor or?
They're gonna be elected by the people, I would say they're a strong mayor.
Not necessarily.
A mayor, a mayor in, uh, Sue, wouldn't that be a conflict? No.
What?
A conflict.
What was that mean?
If you got, if you got a strong mayor and they, Hurst, wouldn't that be somewhat of a conflict?
Sue, all the best of doubt is in this area. Uh, Williston is a strong mayor situation, the mayor is over the fire department and the police department, that's his. And he doesn't even decide over the beat.
So that may land the council as a president. So Willis doesn't either, maybe, but.
That's what he does, he's over the fire department and the police department and, and the general.
That's in Williston, all right.
That's right.
But what about Brunson?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying that's a strong mayor of, uh, council, that's how it works. And then you have five councilmen, they pick whoever they want to be as the president of their council and the vice president. That's how it works. The mayor over there, that's his, his, he has, his responsibility is first and foremost, the fire department and the police department and the employees. The manager still runs the town.
So the way it's split up now, we are responsible, it pretty much be the same thing, but at the thing, we would just pick the, or, well, what he did was we either kept the same thing and we could switch out, whatever. So you're still gonna be responsible for certain things, so the mayor would still be responsible for one of the things that we're already responsible for. He wouldn't be overall, all, everything like that. Are we gonna have a strong mayor, but it's gonna be like it is now, but you do, don't you have to have another person at least? Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So, cause I, I thought when I was reading, we're just saying gonna have a four and.
Then the mayor would have a.
Right, that's, that's what I thought.
That's exactly what's in here, right?
So you'll have five council seats and one mayor?
That's a strong mayor.
That's a strong mayor.
Well, that's what.
So that's a difference.
That's what I'm saying, so what are we having, what are we trying to get in Brunson?
We do what I think we did to.
By, by, every, several people, they wanted to have the ability to, for the mayor to be elected from the vote.
I'm one of those people. But even if you do have that, you still don't have to have a strong mayor.
Right. But you would have to, you would have to do the five seats plus the mayor because of the resign and run rule. Because what would happen is, let's say if three of you guys, so let's say this March, if you guys did push through and then you three ran, you'd have to resign and then come that election, you would no longer have a council.
Here's where it's gonna get dicey, okay? And that is this, in years gone past, we've seen this. This is just a hypothetical situation, just like what Wendy just said. If the three of us decided we all wanna be mayor, just gotta run. Then that's gonna leave two seats available empty.
So.
They got to resign to do that, okay? So there, there's going to be, they have decided to run for mayor, they have not decided to run for council. So then you've got two more vacant seats that the people, the other people that could be running, if they all decide to do that, that's their choice, their prerogative. So you gotta be committed on the situation, that's the way.
But that's not a problem, if just say.
No, no.
Y'all decide to run, so then you'll have two seats open and the public in Brunson would run for those two seats. So it wouldn't matter.
What could, what could be a problem in the years gone past? But I'm assuming that people would get wind of this before it happened, if, you know, but we've had times, we, and I both have seen this, where we only had, nobody ran. If you just walked in, you know, you just, you just, nobody ran against who we had, you know? Uh, we've had that happen before. So if, if, if you decide you're gonna create an empty seat by voting for ever, you know, you did run for mayor, somebody else, and that, that's fine, it's just.
And we may have just walked in because nobody wanted to run, but if nobody said a seat, I'm sure you have people in the town that would actually.
You'd hope so, you'd hope so.
Oh, you would.
I think it'd be all right.
But you would, but you're still answering my question, so are we gonna be the strong mayor or are we gonna keep it?
I don't think we, I don't think the committee really got that far, we probably, we probably have to iron out some of these things.
But their stuff is just as.
This is another deal where Miss Warren's here.
So are we gonna, is this gonna be on the ballot? Yes. It says the goal is to have it on the April first ballot.
In this year, it's valid?
No.
This year.
The next. Correct, correct. So I would think you would need to let the people know whether it's a strong mayor or a weak mayor, because there is a big difference there, big difference.
But that's, again, that's to be put on the ballot for April to.
You gotta narrow it down for us to actually fit the ballot, that's the thing, you gotta get somebody to write that and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if he was here, you know, he's the one that does.
He couldn't do that, you gotta probably have to get somebody special to do that. No, not saying it like that, but no.
He done pretty good.
You know, work, no, I'm saying working at the election, it gotta be a certain, you know, cause this is a lot, ten pages, you can't put that on the ballot.
No.
So. Let me just put the changes on there?
Yeah, let me just finish with the changes, so.
Did you just put the changes on there?
Right, this is what.
Now, that's what I'm saying, you wouldn't put the whole ten pages on there, you would just put the changes on there.
Correct, or just put a, a order. If you look at the ordinance itself, um, it actually says on here, it's on page, it says the second page of the bill, of the, um, ordinance. With clause. Shall Article six of the charter be amended or replaced by the document heretofore endorsed by, sorry, for refereeing by order entrusted provided and as published and made available to citizens and residents? When I talked to Tammy today, she said that's too vague, it would need to have like the changes on the level, because that's, was that, you know, just to have that one sentence does not work out. So we would have to put some sort of a summary, so these are the major changes. So the addition of the town manager, because obviously that's not in the charter currently. Um, we added a section on like our probationary period and job stream for employees, that was noted previously. One of the things the committee wanted was two-year appointments for everybody, so for the town. So for the town manager, the town attorney, and the fire chief, anybody who is appointed would not be a two-year term. Um, modification of the municipal election from the second Tuesday in September to the first Tuesday of April, as you recall back a while ago. Yeah, so we already have that ordinance. Um, elimination of, I just put elimination of arcade fees. There's some fees in here that are, you know, like ten dollars or, you know, a hundred dollars. I mean, fees that would never be valid nowadays. Um, combining the sections on special assessments into one, so street sidewalks, curves, street paving, all into one. Right now it's separate in the charter. Removing the reference, all the references to railroads. And then, um, modification of working, uh, requiring bids. Right now it says anything over two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we have to go off the bid. That's what it says in the charter. So changing that to what is currently, which is twenty-five council boards. Those are the major, you know, a very tiny sign, but...
I have a question. Let me get, let me get, what I'm saying. I think your time is up, April, right?
February 1st.
So how does that work? Does the council have to rehire you or get something out of the table?
Well, I mean, we're really, again, we're talking about moving forward. I mean, they originally, the council, when they hired me, put me on a one-year, then a one-year, then a two-year. Um, I think we're talking about moving forward. You hire another town manager and that person would automatically have a two-year. They just thought that a one-year term was not a very long time for somebody to get in, learn the job and, you know, having to do it every year to see... And again, these are, you have to remember, these are recommendations by the committee. I'm not saying we have to do any or all of these things. But I just want to put it back before the council again, because again, we're trying to get this on the ballot for April 1st. And Paul Farnes will literally two months from now. That's the reason why I put that on the ballot. So Tammy did recommend, like I said, making that a more comprehensive, you know, statement there where we have all the different changes. And then, um, she also recommended that we add the date of the municipal election to the actual ordinance. Those were the two suggestions today. It doesn't have the actual date of April 1st. Again, this is just the first one. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Alright. Anything else, sir? Alright, I'm going to entertain the motion. We're going to read that for first read.
We motion for first read.
So my question is, is if we're going to continue to have some kind of agreement with whatever our youth sports group is, is that something that we need to add to? Because that's a, that's a part of our, that's a taxpayer money to spend on that every year. So should that be something? I mean, I'm sure when this is, obviously when this was originally written, that's not in there. But if we're going to enter into an agreement and spend taxpayer money on said agreement, should that be a part of the charter?
We can. I can certainly ask the attorney more, absolutely. It's not a bad idea.
And the motion that you're asking for, is it to keep pursuing this or...
Yes, just to accept it.
Just to read the...
Just to accept the first reading and then you can change it however, between now and the second read.
I'll put it back on. Yeah, I'll go and ask some of the questions right to attorney now, yes.
Okay, you have a motion for the first read. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, so you thought so or not? Those in the majority.
Alright, next up on the agenda is proposal from Bronson Youth Association regarding our youth sports program. I'm afraid I gave you a little bit of notes, um, for reading the proposal today. I did have one or two questions that I wanted to ask Jack and Nicole and the council. So you have Destin as your secretary and you also have Destin as your softball commissioner. Is that a good idea?
No, it's the one up.
I was originally the secretary, we can change that back.
I, I, I'm just posing that to the council. I didn't know if you guys would want somebody who sits on, sits on the board to also be a member of the sports? If it's not a problem with the council, of course, I have no issue with it, but...
I think with the way you end up getting volunteers, they might not have a choice.
You get somebody that's working and that's committed. I mean, ideally, that's not what we want to do. But if that's your dependable person and that's somebody you can count on...
Well, that's what it is right now. Yeah, but that's going to have on paper.
So I, I have a question before, um, this. Um, is it anyone else's understanding that, I'm assuming that the other program is going to continue with baseball and softball?
As a basketball.
No. Online, it says this. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't the only person that understood that.
I am under the impression that that, that continue sports will continue in some kind of fashion, yes.
So...
Who's what sports?
Are we for sure? Well, we don't know, we, like, I don't think any of them have to ask.
I mean, the attorney said, um...
Oh, but that doesn't stop them, that doesn't make them drop their five oh...
No, no.
Yeah. So but as far as our relationship, once we get to the end of, uh, February or whenever that is, there is no partnership with us. But, but her thing is, she's assuming, she's asking, do they plan on continuing afterwards? And from what we have heard... They can still, they can still be a nonprofit if they want to. You can't stop them from being some profit. The only thing that it has to do with us... Hey, whatever they, that's, that's up to them.
We have had, what did you take on this?
So Act Four, which does your soccer, your basketball stuff, normally only work with one municipality. I'm waiting for a phone call back. They have said in certain situations that just you can have two groups with Act Four. Um, the people that need to know, as in the organizations that are, partnership with Bronson Youth Sports ends in February are aware of it. The issue is as though Babe Ruth baseball, this is our issue right here, is there's one district. And Babe Ruth is not going to give, take the district from Bronson Youth Sports and give it to the town of Bronson. I've been on the phone for the past three days, just I'm trying to figure out how to do this and they will not. They have, we can find another sports league to do baseball and softball out of it, but you can't do Bronson, you can't do...
Maybe it's like Chuck County or Red, so we're not going to...
And that's the issue.
People will have to travel to Gainesville, we're not interested in...
Yeah, and that's going to be your issue.
Maybe you stay in our area and be able to play against Cheeplin. The surrounding areas right here, no one's going to travel forty-five minutes on a regular basis.
And that's what you're going to have to do.
Correct.
So they told me that charter could be back up in December, that there's fees to be paid. And if fees and nothing has been done on their side, come January, possible termination, if we can pick up the charter. But I have no way of guaranteeing that we can pick up the charter.
And that's, no, I mean, we're under the, we're under their rules, very obviously to do that. What I do not understand is, is this, our, our association was unwilling and, but we voted to do that. February, the eighteen, so they will not have a facility to use...
They will have priorities.
They will not have the financial support on several different situations. Because it is a private item with us and it is, and the insurance, what is it?
They won't be able to be, yeah, and they won't be able to host a tournament unless they have the proper insurance.
This is, this is where I question their motivation for doing this and why. But anyhow, that's their, they are a private entity and they can be basically what they want to when it comes to that. This is still the United States, okay? So they can do, so I, that, that we cannot control.
And it's not going to give it up. Or Act Four is going to allow two, because they got connections over there.
That's why you choose the vice president with that.
You could be as connected as you want to if you ain't got no money and you can't pay for it, they don't.
But now Act Four...
You're doing a lot of big things, so I don't know, it is what it is.
We've only gotten off because we have four kids that are going to play sports.
Act Four, you know, next year when they're up, we'll not do two. The only reason that we do two now is if you guys, there was some overlapping and we had to do insurance.
Oh, so next?
Yeah. Once we stop and there's runs out...
But Babe Ruth...
Babe Ruth as a whole, because I needed to, I didn't get a chance to talk to her today because I don't know who originally had the charter with Babe Ruth. If it was the town, because I don't mind making an issue and digging.
Right.
But we all know that. But my question is, was the town of Bronson the one that originally did the charter? Or did Bronson Youth Sports do the charter?
I did a charter on the BPR.
So it now belongs to the town?
So it belongs to the town. Okay. That's all I need to know. I will take care of the rest of it.
That charter has been inactive, but it's still there. But it's going to be some legal stuff because you can go and open up, but it is, uh, they had a charter.
And they can't just kick a group out. But that was one of the things I need to find out is, did Bronson Youth Sports open the charter? Or was that charter with us originally?
So you got an answer?
Or is the current job in the town, which means...
So you got to talk to somebody.
I'm pretty sure that...
So is Act Four not doing baseball and softball? Or do they have their own? Or is that Babe Ruth too? All of it is Babe Ruth?
Well, they play under the office of Babe Ruth.
But it's okay.
But they have their own Act Four, you know, volleyball, softball.
Right.
You know, they have their own league. Like I was telling, you know, they can be under Act Four, but four is getting into the district. You know, to go to district playoffs and all that, because they're not a chartered team. They won't be able to get into districts. And then the team that play them, the games won't count if they're not chartered.
Right.
You have to have played, you have to have ten games that were chartered leagues in order to count towards districts.
Okay.
You thought this would be a smooth transition? We did not get involved with this until...
Well, and like I say, it's, it's a, uh, issue for... But we have people that start to think...
Yeah, no, we don't, we're just trying to help, this is getting harder. We won't even try to help.
So as far as that part, though, you're still going to look into that. But Act Four, well, once we're done with them, they won't recognize them as being part of us. So that'd be hard.
So that's basketball, but for Babe Ruth, that's baseball. We have spring season coming up.
Right, that's what she's going to work on it and see.
I'm trying to work, we're going to try to figure this out before, long before them, which is why I started making phone calls.
I just ask that, um, as we keep pushing forward, if everyone in here has the children as their reason, their motivation, that no matter what happens, when those people can no longer play and they decide to come over, please just welcome them or open arms and let's become all evils. Um, because the, the division is killing us. It's killing our town.
It is.
The division.
The division.
In sports, in our sports, it's, it's hurting our town so much.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I'm not saying it's your fault, it's not your fault. I appreciate you stepping up. I'm just saying, we got to get that out of here. Like, we just got to get it.
We need to body, we need to...
Yeah. We need to get all together, all for the kids, all... Yeah.
I'm spending my money out there, I've spent my time out there. Things should already be going to take care of, that's a problem. I'm not doing the parenting, you know what I mean? All the parents are doing. So that's an issue, so. Y'all want to act most for them, whatever y'all want to do.
My kids, my kids are older, I've been in their spot.
Yeah.
But Mr. Curtis was the coach. And I appreciated everything that he did.
Coach too.
Yeah. But I just want us to get on one accord. But it's going to take, from the way it sounds, it sounds like it's going to take us like six months to a year to push whatever out, push all the negativity out that we can and then...
We don't have any negative.
No, no, no.
She's talking about within the community. BYS, so everybody gets the same understanding.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't. Most they see the positive things, what, you know, we kind of do or trying to do or trying to do. I mean, they don't turn around, but I'm not coming back. I'm not going to waste six months here, I'm not going to keep playing this game, you know what I mean? I've always been a time, month, aggression, bad for here and there. So hopefully something gets resolved. Like I said, I didn't move money on it.
And to have two voluntary teams is just silly. It's absolutely ridiculous.
But I think what she's saying is that, I'm not so... You do, you, you, you do what you do and let that speak for itself and don't get involved in what the side... And if somebody's, when the, when they bring you that, we doing what we can do and that's all we're going to do. And just keep going on about it and don't intermingle in that. And then after a while, it'll go away. So you just have to worry only about what y'all plan to do and let that be it. Don't worry about nothing else.
But you see how I was confused? I came to the meeting, I asked for me, I didn't get on Facebook asking what their opinion was. I came to the meeting and asked. That's what we got to do. We got to be adults, we got to be grownups and handle it the right way. Like, we're, if we're all working for the kids, we're all going to be on one accord. I mean, it's just, we are. And when I say taking six months to a year, I don't mean for you to start. I mean for you to be able to stretch out, yeah.
But they're promoting a new system to...
And the reason why I say that is, uh...
Don't, don't worry about what they promote or what they do, do you?
I don't have faith in them being able to function for six months to a year. I just don't.
They don't have the finances.
Right, exactly.
So that's what we're saying, is just go on promoting and doing what you're going to do. We've already made agreement that you're going to start such and such, that's what you're going to do. And just don't worry about what they do, you kind of got to turn off that and just ignore the outside noise. So that doesn't stop you from doing what you've already said you were going to do. Start with baseball, softball, whatever. Once we figure out this charter thing, we just move forward from there. So if they decide that they're going to have registration, that's, that's on them. That don't have nothing to do with us, don't have nothing to do with you.
And as long as you show the support, you know, posting it on the town of Bronson Facebook or, you know, whatever, so that the town knows that you're standing behind us, that would be helpful.
First thing I do is accept that actual proposal.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to post it if they don't Facebook and still propose it.
Oh, I, I know, I'm just saying eventually.
Yeah, we need to do it until they're, you know, done with, there's no need to still, you know, people not, who they're fighting for. And just wait like a month or four, baseball signs, softball signs, something like that.
But I was going to say, she's giving us a notice that they might go with BYS because they'll think there's only BYS, you know? It's just...
Well, once we vote on the proposal, there's nothing stopping you from saying, beginning, starting in...
Everyone.
Yeah.
And just be honest, like if somebody comes and asks you, hey, I thought BYS, saying BYS is still an organization, we're back by the town of Bronson, if you guys need to bid, and just be completely open and honest. Don't fashion, not that you put it, but...
A new organization. Instead of taking over, it wasn't intended to take, it was just a new...
We could innovate and we were accepted, whatever, that's all you have to say. Before we do go to that, so there was a couple of recommendations that we need to make sure that we all are agreed to. Because I have a question, I asked in case we had any question. So I guess I'm going to start with my biggest concern. It's not a personal issue with him, because I've worked with Matthew Taylor and I have a problem. But what I do have a problem with is you taking all your toys and leaving them somewhere else. Because I felt like we weren't given an opportunity to intervene or say anything about it. And before, next thing we know, all of the kids was just gone and cheap. I have a problem. So I, I would just ask that if there is an issue, that that not be allowed to happen.
If we had a football team, they wouldn't...
Well, here's the thing, we had a football team. We had a football team and whatever happened between them, this here and there, people's not there. And then all of a sudden...
I was there, I heard it from them.
Right, right. I, I hear it. I, I'm not, and I'm not discounting that. What I have an issue with is, okay, that happened. Instead of coming here and addressing it or going to somebody and addressing it, we just took the whole team and left.
We don't agree with certain things. They should have never put the Cheeplin jersey to mind. Taylor knows how we feel about it.
Uh, what happened was, it was like a week before the game, she didn't have uniforms, we didn't... Uh, what happened was, it was like a week before the game, she didn't have uniforms, we didn't have helmets.
But we didn't, that's what I'm saying.
Six, eight months after you were practicing.
I mean, we bring our issues to them.
No.
No, they were not telling us any of that.
But we didn't know that there was anybody else but them to go to, so it just.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, we just need to make sure of that.
I didn't even hear, I was surprised it didn't come on.
That's one of the things that I, that I hope to put in here, just like Sherry has in here. And that is a little bit more knowledge, and, and the reason why is it's first and foremost, the town of Bronson has our name on us, okay? We want the clarity, you know, we want to be able to see what's going on out there, we have to make sure. That is one of the main problems that we've had, just like what we just did, that just came out. You know, we didn't know this, okay? Those problems manifested in places, and everybody sits here, they go pointing fingers, and then the first thing I hear about somebody on Facebook, do this, or somebody dead, death, and this and y'all. I don't sit around all day long, I don't need it, so. I, I just tell people this, I said, first and foremost, and that is for the kids, we want to provide facilities that you feel comfortable with, and to go to out there. We want the safety precautions to be clear, we want the financials to be clear, we want the responsibilities to be clear. The, the, the people that you have out there working, they need to do at least, sue a, uh.
Background check.
Background check. We can't, we can't have somebody coming out there that we don't believe. I mean, you've got people on this list here, of people like, I don't have a clue who they are, I know who you are, and I know who the code is, because we've sat down and talked to y'all, but I don't know these people here, so I'm depending on you to provide us with people, they need to have a background check, when you go in there, and, and everything needs to be clear before I can say, the town of Bronson feels very comfortable. This organization provides sporting activities for our children.
Where they named that.
If, if somebody doesn't do a good job, he will remove them. You don't have to worry about that.
But I need to have, but see here, here's what I need. I need to have that in a legal documentation to where we can, from our attorney, and you need to sign it, so it say, so it will protect us, the town of Bronson.
Again, it's what the agreement, what the agreement was gonna say.
The easiest way you can do that is by having your coaches, your volunteers sign a radius clause. And that would be, you can't go however many miles outside of the radius of whatever you're signing. That means if you say fifty miles, if you say a hundred miles.
That's something online, boom, 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 that's what I did when I, when I had to.
No, I'm saying, if you set a radius clause, they cannot go from here to Chiefland. They can't go from here to losing, they can't go from here to losing open. They can't do that. And if they sign.
I agree. I, I agree with everything. Nobody should ever leave, and everything that happened was.
Without us having an opportunity to keep our kids.
Right. We're trying to bring the kids back. All the kids left Bronson and went to Trenton and Williston before this.
They were persuaded to do that.
I'm not talking about when you told you, that's different. The whole team wants to achieve what, I'm, I'm talking in general, I mean, the kids that left.
I, I, I agree with some of the things that you're saying, but I also disagree with that, because that isn't apparent. Won't you take your child somewhere else?
That's not what she was saying. She was like, my coach.
I'm saying a coach. I'm saying with our workers here, that's what I'm saying.
They wanted to mandate him to do that.
And you do it in real estate every day. You do it in real estate every day, and you do it in insurance.
But listen.
And let me just say, the reason, the reason he took the kids to Chiefland is because after practicing from February all the way until, and so, from February until I paid over three hundred dollars for four of my kids to play tackle football, three months later, we didn't have helmets, pads, pants, uniforms, zero. And the parents are complaining to Mr. T over and over, week, day after day, week after week, we have group chats, and, and Mr. T is relaying information that he was given from Angela and Scott. So you get to a breaking point, you know, he's human, I'm not trying to say what he did was right. One hundred percent, he shouldn't have gone there, but the parents went and they got a refund because they did not provide uniforms after prac, I mean, these kids were practicing without pads.
We knew back then we're supposed to come to y'all and not.
So, I guess I would say what I would add to your proposal.
You know, we didn't know, we were just parents.
So, simple, to add to the proposal, is you said in your proposal that you would have quarterly meetings every quarter. After that meeting, then somebody, whether you or him, would should come here, and we should get a full report of what happens every single quarter, period. That needs to be added to the proposal. That, that's what I'm saying.
Do you want it added to the proposal, or do you want it in the agreement?
I want it in the agreement, yes, I want it in the agreement.
We did have a meeting and we transcribed it, we can send that to you.
No, that's what I'm saying, so, every, every quarter after you have your meeting, your representative from the organization should come to before council and say, hey, it's all peters and cream, everything is working, we got this amount of money, here's our financial report, we just had a meeting, everything is good. Or they come to a meeting, they say, hey, everything is good except dang it, in baseball, we had X, Y, and Z happen, and we had to dismiss the coach. There shouldn't be a time when we find out about that after the whole team has nothing, went somewhere else. So what I'm saying is that, in the agreement, it needs to be said that every quarter, we gonna hear from y'all with a, here.
Quarterly report.
Quarterly report, period, that's it, that's all, that's it. So then, that doesn't happen, because we're getting the feedback back and forth. And if your parents know, at the last meeting of that quarter, or it's out, and they have a problem with you, then they welcome to come to the meeting to address it. So it won't be, those parents wouldn't have to keep going to miss the tea. They could've came to a meeting and said, hey, we got this problem, we tried addressing it with them, and it's not working. So then that way, it's, it's out there that June fifteenth, the B Y A will be presenting at the council meeting.
And we do have Team Snap, I don't know, I don't know if that was in the proposal.
And that, I wanna ask that too, what is that?
It's amazing, we paid seven hundred and fifty dollars for it for the year, it's ridiculous.
It's just, we're registering, it's just like an all, all inclusive registration, for every sport, coaches, uh.
Everything is there.
Parents, you know, we got four kids, so we got fourteen different apps that we have to, this one, this one, this one. So this is all together, registration, registrator wants to register, but you have to bank account and name.
If they pay cash, it's up to us on the backend, I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm sorry, to go in and mark it off.
But basically, it's all integrated, and sports from where it uses.
It says, I was asking about, and what is the videos?
Videos.
It says.
Is training videos you guys?
Oh, Team Snap offers that. That company does, they offer training videos.
And.
Is that part of what you pay for, or is that something that you not pay extra?
No, no.
That's something that we pay for. It's just to make it easier, just so we're not running around here with paper, and cell phones, and this, that, and the other thing, they can do it from the computer, they can do it from their cellphone, or they can write us a check.
They might be wanting to get game changer too.
Ma'am, game changer?
This is, this is, I think this is to replace that.
It's just literally, it's just everything.
No, I'm talking about for the games.
But what's game changer?
It's video, they can watch the games.
Oh, 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 oh.
It's to do online score, online score.
Oh, we had, for baseball. Yes, 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 I was over seeing that, we used to use that.
Now, that was my biggest concern, was that.
All right, and to give you a heads up.
Of course, we have to do the agreement.
Um, to give you a heads up, if you guys could be, I'm just saying this because, um, Sherry will appreciate it later. But if y'all could be training bookkeepers, um.
Ms. Lori Terry's our treasurer, she's gonna be keeping her books.
No, I'm not talking about financial, I mean stats. Like, if you could be training bookkeepers, because she could use bookkeepers in the high school and too, um.
I did call Mr. Miller and I, I told him that you would work with the high school as well, so that our practices don't conflict with each other, so that the kids can play with us and play with the high school.
I mean, that's how they used to do it, just sort of simple, put parents, kids, and get out of school, go across the street to the high school, they all practice together, and you get picked up at lunch, and it'll just.
We could put banners there, make it look beautiful, like.
Yeah, it's easy to get a kid or whatever, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
What about, um, equipment inside the?
We're gonna figure that out in the time coming, just about that.
The building.
Yes, we, we have, uh, we got set up to take first, only first, uh, to everybody.
Cause this is, this, you know.
There's some of that stuff I don't even know what they're.
That's the thing.
Yeah, no, they, they have, I don't think they probably know what they have, and the issue gonna be is how you're gonna take it from them, and give it to them.
And you can't do that.
Well, you can't do it till February eighteenth.
Look, that's what I'm saying, and I don't think.
Yes, the town of Bronson purchased that stuff.
But you're having a hard time figuring out what they.
You're gonna have to pull every handful to figure out what the town of Bronson bought, and what the county bought them, and then what they bought themselves. It's gonna be a big issue trying to.
Once we get through.
You know, once, you know, whatever's there, you're gonna have to go with what's there to see what you need. And a lot of the things, you know, you gotta get with the people first, to see what you're gonna have in order, because right now, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be a mess with, with the transition of them versus you all, whereas the people are gonna say they're gonna go with you all, and then turn around, their kids are gonna be signed up with them. And then you can't stop people from taking their kids other places, because what's gonna happen? They're not gonna be with, with them, they may not wanna be with something new, they're gonna take their kids. So you're gonna have a season that you're gonna go through, that you might not have teams for certain ages, and you gotta be willing to.
Right, because we don't have that many kids in Bronson, where there's enough to have two different teams for each age.
But, but I tell you, we have other towns around us who are having similar problems, and they just had to stop basketball, um, because they didn't have enough kids to play, so.
That happened in baseball with BYS this season.
Right, so I would say, like, stay, stay strong, and it, it ain't gonna take longer than a year.
Nah, we got kids from Florida, and these kids are, they're playing. Right now, and this, that, and the other, but.
It's gonna have to be figured out after February eighteenth, because we can't take it from them anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, here, here's, just make, just, and I'll look at the big picture from all of this. We have, we have an organization that we are cutting ties with, that's all it has happened. We've asked for proposals, you're the only proposal we got, so you're our, our people, and we vote that way, okay? Unless we decide to go out and change ourselves, or do whatever, uh, so with that being said, let's carry on. You know, we gotta do something, so, you know, and I appreciate y'all's involvement, I appreciate your, just like when we met the other day, I told you exactly how I feel. It's all about the kids. It's all about the kids. It's all about, I, I just, and I heard this story, because nine years ago, I don't wanna see a thing, I just wanna see the baby. Okay, I wanna see, I wanna see what's best for the kids, and.
That's what I was saying, hanging up, super shameless uniforms, I mean, we're ready to go, for the kids, that's our brand.
I got a question, cause I'm a kid.
Yes, sir.
How much does it cost, uh, any kid, little kid, what I'm, what I'm talking about, a little kid?
Depends on the sport.
To play.
Depends on the sport, eighty-five to ninety-five.
Eighty-five to ninety-five.
First season, yes, and that includes your uniform. But if they play baseball, they have to provide their own bat, or you provide balls, we provided balls last season. Have to provide.
Eighty-five, ninety-five.
Well, we, we basically took ten dollars off, but they were short because.
And those, if you train in other places, that's very comparable to what it costs.
That's not that bad.
Cause, cause people are already.
Support community.
Yeah, I, I need it, but.
It's a incentive to, to do a break.
You don't, but I'm telling you, you don't even need that, it's like, you don't need it. I'm telling you.
Anybody wanna say fifteen, I mean, what do you mean?
I'm saying.
Play force.
Because this is y'all's first year, this is y'all's first year.
Well, we go, we, if, if we go, we all, we would support you.
Oh, yeah, yes, for sure.
And, and, and I know for a fact, I mean, I was out there, I took my hands off. That's the weekend, maybe, the weekend before. I was out there, back in. Uh, I took pictures out there the weekend before last, there was a thousand people out there in that park.
You're gonna have to see that all the time.
And, uh, kids were playing, they ever field, had kids on it, uh, one or two times, I had to get someone out in the woods out there, and those people, cutting out market, it's an alligator, and then you get them out, and it was another way, but that's children, because that's what happened. Uh, I got.
All right, we can put the, I make a motion, accept that proposal, and instruct attorney Warren to write up the contract with our applications.
That's they can, all right.
We have a motion, in a second.
Need to reach out all the time.
Yeah, we sit here.
You wanna go?
Yeah.
Take some of them.
Motion, in a second, all those papers, see if they're sticking out, moves, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you, we're excited to work with you guys.
We're gonna go, turn that over, fourteen.
Bye.
All right, two, three.
Okay, last but least is the approval of the two hundred and fifty dollar holiday bonus. Um, just like in previous years, we still have lead full-time employees, so the total cost for the, um, holiday bonus will be two thousand dollars, and it is included in twenty-four, twenty-five, this will be.
I make a motion that we accept the, that we approve the two hundred and fifty dollar home.
Is this only for full-time employees?
Correct.
Are the part-time employees getting anything?
Nope.
Not even a turkey?
They get invited to Thanksgiving, they're like.
How many part-time, how many part-time employees is it? Are they coming in the very, the department?
Hold on.
No, it's a town.
Whole world, whole world.
No, there's definitely more than three.
Part-time?
Yes, because they've never quit, there's four, five part-time, there's.
Who are you talking, not the fire department, they don't.
But they're part-time employees.
Part-time employees, but we never did.
When you give it to the part-time, we don't give it to the fire department, I'm gonna check.
Yeah, that's the thing, is if you include them.
Yeah, we're gonna vote for it.
There's like six of them, six or seven.
All women, or is that just them?
That's just part-time.
All together, six or seven, seven or eight.
We, we've never done it.
Yeah, they've never done anything for the part-time employees.
Where do you help, I feel that?
I'm planning.
You were, you were you caring?
Uh, I don't know.
You go home?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
It's not F A.
Next Wednesday?
No. Isn't Thanksgiving next?
We have a motion in a second.
No.
All right, but let's get through this first.
She right, she's right, it's, it's, basically, it's next Thursday.
I, I.
I have a motion, in a second, all those papers, take a policy, I.
I.
Motion carries.
Next Wednesday, twenty-fourth.
It's next Wednesday.
You ain't gonna try to cater, I know, unless Bruce is there.
We don't, we're not, we're not, it's private.
I thought it was catered.
No, the Christmas party that we went to, it's, no, we're going to that place.
Black wrong.
No, no.
It's turned last year.
Oh, boy, y'all went to the one. I wonder, I didn't know. I, that's a, that's a no. That's a no. Yeah. That's a big fat no, and it's gonna be a big fat no. I keep talking about it. You're talking about it. I'm saying.
Sure we're doing it.
Doing this, got, got, got it. Come on, Curtis, let's go, come on, come on.
I'm good, I'm good.
You don't got nothing? He said you don't got nothing.
You got something else?
Wait.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we.
Russell wants to cash out his, um, vacation time, how much is it?
He left, he, uh, I think Russell has, oh, I talked to him this morning, he had, he's over the two forty, I think, I think he's at eighty. Uh, if he wanna cash in eighty hours.
Eighteen hours.
That was vacation.
Make a motion to approve Russell's cash out time.
I said.
Motion in a second, all those papers, take a policy, I.
Uh, that's good to mend, don't take it out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you?
Well, I said, every, we're doing this as long as I'm clear.
Is that all you have, Curtis?
Curtis, you got anything?
That's all you have.
All right, yeah, if you're not here, if you're not here, the only thing I've got to talk about is I did apply, and you know, same.
Cause I had no one to, to get, get them.
I don't have any, that, from, I have a solar plant. I would, uh, I would say.
But they are, but they are remodeling ones that they got.
I can't hear one, just get tired of it.
Get your gal. Okay, here we go. The only thing I have on my agenda tonight was I have talked to the people putting in the, uh, solar plant out there, they have, uh, they had some overburden sand and stuff, we needed that for the field out here to try to overseed it, to get, to get it up, you know, because so they don't have as much wetness out there. So, uh, they have graciously consented to, uh, donate some of that to us. Uh, that'll happen right after Thanksgiving, uh, and that's all I got.[1795.46]
That's in the park?
Yes. They will, and they will bring it out there to us when they come. All right, Ms. Sherri?
Um, have you kind, I noticed that David and Angela have been advertising for some kind of thing with Santa Claus out at the park. Have they done that, they could work, or came to say anything about that?
They have not responded to my last several things, like, you know, their...
Cause, yeah, I mean, they still have to do the...
Yes.
Yeah.
Registration.
Will they have to show proof of insurance to have events at the park and...
Yes.
So they just not responding to, to no?
I asked for the financials for the cheer, after the cheerleading, no response. I asked about them putting the, what do they call it? Coach person is supposed to be there, no response.
There's a meeting going on right now at the park.
Yeah, they're just not following.
So, they are, um...
Well, that's what I'm saying, they are, they're already put out there, they're advertising for an event, and they haven't went through the steps to do what they're supposed to be doing. So, can we send them, and she can answer it or not, but send something in writing that says, before you can have this event, we have to have X, Y, and Z, or you gonna have to cease and desist.
Because they don't know whether the town's doing something that they...
Well, we had an issue last weekend where somebody rented out a building at the park, and then Friday before the event, they emailed me, and I let them know that, okay, but these people have priority, and if they have that section and parents, you are, it's your job to remove those parents because they have priority over David and Angela.
That is, is some of the problems that we have. Okay, uh, anything else?
No, that's it. That was the, that's my question.
Tom, you actually said, we should, we know that these, these things that's happening, why we gonna get them to come to a meeting, and y'all tell them, okay, this is what need to happen?
You mean now that we officially...
You know what I'm saying, to let them know, so... Because it's gonna get, it's gonna get...
Well, yeah, we, we can invite them, but I can tell you, if, if the attitude is anything like it was at the last meeting that we went through there, they're not, it, it was very, and, and, and I, and I can tell you that, those parents were very nice, very respectful in the beginning, basically just asking for questions about what had happened, and she went from zero to a hundred real quick about a simple question. And so that's my kind of concern, is that coming here and making a scene, when you already know that this is what you're asked for, and then we get, you get asked for to put certain things in order, and then we don't get nothing, and so now they're not responding at all. So that, I mean, we can invite them, but, I mean, at the point that it becomes an issue or a scene, we just need to kind of get it.
Cause what they're doing, I think, you know, just when they're just listening, but they, they calling big group saying that the towns, it is, I guarantee, it may or may not be true, so I'm not gonna make that statement, but you kind of got to draw emphasis that this is what's happening. That they're probably telling their side of the story, and they the victim.
Right, and that's exactly what was going on with the...
So if you don't do something to structure that has to come, you know, that, that's not what the town doing, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna go with everybody pretty much that, that they have allegiance with, and the town gonna be the bad people.
Yeah. And that, and that's exactly what was happening with the cheerleading. It was like, it was everybody's responsibility, everybody's fault, all the way down to the commissioner that was over it for what had happened, and it's like, then when you boil down to it, it's not, it's not, it's not her fault that money was mishandled, cause that's basically what it boiled down to, but it was her fault because she did da-da-da, and so that's what it turned into. So you're right, that the victim part is definitely already...
Well, I can tell you that when I spoke to the president in the big room, he told me, made it perfectly clear that he had heard everything that had been going on in Bronson. So, and it was not from me, and I did not elaborate.
And really, that's, that's the way it happens, because when, when I started doing park, it was hard to get people to play games, because they already heard, oh, Bronson is this, that, you know, so it's gonna be, that's why I was trying to explain to them, this first year they going to?
It's gonna be...
They may not have any teams for any schools, you know, but they just have to be, you know, but they have kids, so they're trying to secure teams so their kids can be involved.
Right.
But it's gonna be very difficult for them to really get lifted off the ground going forward.
It's gonna take our whole community.
Um, and then, you know, it's gonna, this is gonna divide the community, gonna be divided, because you're gonna have the ones that, you know, with David and Angela, then you're gonna have the ones that, so neither one, if they don't work together, it's sad to say, but they're gonna have to work together in order to have any team.
Just suggest children, and make you a, a random, of what you expect, what you have to offer them, and have them writing, and give them something in black and white, so they can respond to it, and you will have some in your records documentation that you communicate by paper.
And that's what we're trying to put again here right now, as we got to. Okay, uh, Tom?
Um... I should take a picture of the new truck, but it's, uh, it's come along, the one that they're building in Williston, it's come along nicely, they say, hopefully, two to three weeks it'll be done, um, minus whatever new equipment we're gonna put on there, but it'll still be functioning without it. Um, Gail and Jeff are still, well, now that both of them right of town, because the debt's in the family, they'll delay it by a couple of days, and they're trying to figure out what they wanna do for, um, purchasing that with that extra forty-five grand that we have to spend. Um, our engine is out of service for a couple of days, well, hopefully until tomorrow, just until tomorrow, we dropped it off in the Cal this morning, um, to get brakes done, um, and some other maintenance stuff done, so hopefully, that...
That's the new truck we just got?
No, that's our old engine.
Okay, are the doors and everything working finally now?
Yeah, we have one more that needs to be adjusted, um, it's kind of got, it just hangs up as it starts coming down, it kind of jumps a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but all that, other than that, they're, um, all is working open?
Baby box?
I haven't heard anything else with the testing on that.
Cause they was waiting on the, the si, the alarm, right?
Yeah, I talked to Chuck about it last week, and you trust me, the baby wants people to call and do, nobody wants it done more than they do. They probably would come out and do their blessing, but we have to have a full week of testing, that's, uh...
Are we still waiting on Nick, or are we waiting on?
I need the people, we have twenty-four hours, we actually have, we have to...
Somebody has to be there twenty-four hours per week?
Well, Jeff's trying to make it so that if somebody, I mean, you know, literally, if somebody comes and tries to put something in there right now, if there's nobody to station it, he would just get a call, and now we count us, I don't know how the baby wants to...
It's supposed to send a dispatch too.
I know, well, he's working on it.
Okay.
He's working.
Okay.
I think they had to involve the county's, I think, because it has to send a page of dispatch with letting them know so they can dispatch EMS.
Okay.
So I don't know where, I, I, I gotta talk to Clayton Drew anyway, so I can see if he's heard anything about it.
Okay.
I know they are working on the plans for the county to do.
To move them out of that.
Move them in, yeah, they, the construction and maintenance, and air trip measurements and all that stuff, so they're working on, they have to get Mike involved.
Just to show plans, just to show what they're doing.
Show what they're doing, and then, they still, by, by January one, that's when they're...
That's a shoot, sorry.
Yeah.
What was there in your, what, pretty much that's what they're doing or something?
Oh, it is, yeah, one point seven.
Um, so, when somebody reaches out to me, I tried to tell y'all, no matter what, whether it's important here or not, Alicia Beckham had reached out to me about possibly having like a, um, Christmas light contest of some sorts, and maybe the winner we put on the newsletter, or we put on the Facebook page, or something like that, and we all know that somebody on Main Street is doing it anyway. But I just thought I would relay the message, and then, um, okay, so that's that. And then number two is, so the permits that people have to get to have a, um, food truck in Bronson, do they get the permits that they're supposed to have?
It's a peddler's permit, and it's a one-time every year, is it two seventy-five?
I think it's fifty dollars, well...
It's either fifty or seventy-five for a peddler, but all the food trucks that we are, we know about that are here have those permits.
Okay, cause this, there's a lot of Facebook draw, although, in reference to food trucks here, and I would just like to say that I appreciate anybody bringing old chicken legs to Bronson, when we ain't got nobody cooking nothing here. So I don't get upset when I see a food truck in Bronson, I really think like, wow, you know, we might have something else that's three miles up the road. Um, but we have a lot of people in town that are having a hard time with the food trucks being here. Um, I, I, so I'm just hoping that we can get along, we really can't afford to lose any more businesses.
It's, it's one future if they got a problem.
Chick-fil-A, which has paid the permit.
Because somebody held on them last year, so I literally had to go down, you know...
But there's not a kid at that school that doesn't wanna go to Chick-fil-A when it's free.
I agree, I agree with you. I will also say that the business owner that was complaining about that, never actually spoke to any other business owners, so that one voice became thirty voices, although it was just from one voice.
And see, that's, that's the kind of stuff like you, I just wanna say...
That's frustrating.
I just wanna say, if anybody ever has a problem with Chick-fil-A or the business owner that has Chick-fil-A there, if you walk in and tell the owner, they will oblige any idea that you have that will help you feel better about them being there, whether they're in your parking spot, whether they're in your way, or whatever, just letting y'all know. Um, because we just can't afford to lose any businesses right now. We just can't afford it. We gotta get along at this point.
One thing I'd like to say, I appreciate all my seniors coming out, and, and they're loyal to you, because I know you tired of me, so I'm glad.
We never tired, we never tired.
I ain't never tired.
We got anybody else? You say anything before I get off.
I do it one more time. The twenty-fifth, November twenty-fifth, they're doing a, um, fire safety thing at the ladder, um, fire department will be there. The ambulance will be there, call willing, um, so there'll be some people from the county there too. It's at eleven AM on the twenty-fifth.
So is there like a checker truck kind of thing?
Yeah, it's gonna be, like, they're gonna do, we're gonna give out the same stuff they do when we go to the elementary school. We'll give out like the hats and the fire safety books and all that, and they'll do a demonstration, and probably do like a, um, tour of the truck, and play with lights, and do a, uh, fire safety demonstration.
Is there something that we could, I don't think that out?
Yeah, there's a flyer, I have, I can send it to, um...
Can you send it to me, then I can send it out through the school?
Yeah.
I can send that out to you.
I gotta find it now.
Yeah. When you find it, I can send it out through the school.
Will the kids be out of school?
Yes.
They're calling it story time, libraries, library made flyer, um, I'll send it to y'all right now.
Then I can send it, I can send it out through our school stuff tomorrow.
I think I, I think I just sent it the right group chat, I don't know, if not, so...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right, so, Ms. Sherri, what do you ask for?
I, I ask you, give it out, thanks, give it back, that's all, that's all.
No.
I was only wanting food, babe.
Well, then, 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 well, on production.
No, ma'am.
Hey, Sherri.
No, ma'am.
Ted, boy, you...
No, ma'am.
Jer.
You said it?
I'm looking for food, babe.
Joe, you will do that.
Food, babe.
She ain't looking for nothing.
That regular for you. I ain't talking about...
That, that, that don't let, let us be out the meeting, and then you in your mouth like that.
I'll let you take a motion to pay the bills, and we can get it out.
I read, I have a motion that we pay the bills.
I said it.
We have a motion in a second, all those papers, take them out, I...